With the agenda. And the first item we have is face covering ordinance. And I think there will be a big discussion on that, Stephen. I'll let you give us some highlights.
Yes, sir. I'll go through like I normally do some of the data. And on the agenda tonight, there is a resolution for the potential of terminating, moving from a requirement to a recommendation, and also encouraging vaccination. So, but as we start out, just to give you an update on where we are within the numbers. This is our daily positive cases. I added in another line since we're talking about the ordinance. The purple line is the date that we adopted the face covering mandate. The red line is just a line so you can kind of see where we are. This is as of April 5th, when I put the data together. That red line just kind of gives you a comparison across the whole year to see where we are today versus where we were throughout the year. So as you can see, the cases have significantly dropped from the winter. We are leveling off and we're pretty much where we were last summer. As you can see, we're kind of holding steady at that point over the last month. And talking about cumulative cases, again, I've added the purple line to show this is when we adopted the face man- face covering mandate. To date, as of April 5th, we had about just short of seventeen thousand eight hundred total positive cases. That means about fourteen percent of the population has tested positive in Pickens County. As you can see, as the previous slide indicated, the days that this each number you see in there is how many days it took to go up a thousand cases. With our high lowest point being, again, right after the first of the year, around the middle of January, taking five days. Last thousand took us twenty-four days to increase by. And based on the pace that we're at, it'd be thirty-five days to get to the next thousand, which puts us again back to last summer where it took us thirty-five days to get a thousand cases. So again, this gives our fourteen day running average. It's kind of the lifespan of the the virus from time present to the time you're allowed to return. Some things been dropped to ten days, some places have been subject to be consistent. Across, again, the purple is when we adopted the face covering mandate. The red again is a trend line, so you can see that we're running pretty much in line with where we were last summer. Moving on to total deaths, as of four or five, we had two hundred eighty-two total deaths in Pickens County. You can see those peaked around Christmas, and again, those have dropped significantly through since the winter. Below that is the number of cases, the number of tests that are positive. As of April 5th, we were at two point four percent. That was a seven day running average of the total of the number of tests that are coming back positive. You can see that's pretty low, that during, again, the Christmas time, we were up over fifteen to twenty percent of cases coming back positive. So talking about vaccinations. Again, this is as of April 5th. There were about thirty-five thousand people who had started their vaccinations in Pickens County. That means they've either received one dose of the Pfizer and Moderna, or the single dose of the Johnson and Johnson. Or they've received both, or they've received at least one shot. If you look at the total population, it's about twenty-eight percent. If you look at those over fifteen, which are eligible to actually get the vaccine sixteen and up right now, we're a little over a third of the entire county has been vaccinated as of April 5th. You can kind of see the age breakdown on there. So talking about the face covering ordinance, just a reminder, we did adopt it December sixteenth, twenty twenty. It did require face coverings inside any building which is open to the public while waiting at any building, engaging in business, in public commercial industrial spaces, and utilizing public and commercial transportation services. We never did add a fine for it, but if anybody ever did call and complain about somebody not following the ordinance, it would have been enforced for any other reason, for example, public disorderly or failure to follow directions. It was set up to only be terminated in two ways. One, by council adopting a resolution to terminate it, or by the governor not extending his emergency declaration related to COVID. He's continued to extend those. And he actually issued a new one on April 7th, and it will run for fifteen more days. And I don't know that, he stated anytime that he's looking to remove his emergency declaration. It does allow certain things related to procurement, movement of goods, and especially with the funds coming in from the American Rescue Plan. So again, council can terminate it through a resolution. Sent out an email to council with some of this data and asked if anybody was interested in seeing this item brought back up. I had a few council members say that they were. So that's why I drafted a resolution. It would be on the agenda tonight. It would, like I said, it would change the requirement to a recommendation. And also states that it would encourage people to get their vaccination. However, if council takes no action, the face covering mandate will remain in place until council chooses to either take up a resolution, vote again to terminate it, or if the governor ever ceases to do his extended emergency declaration. So that's where we are. That tells you a little bit about why it's on the agenda and what would happen depending on which way council voted tonight. So I can answer any question, but leave it for y'all's discussion.
So what did the governor's executive order on April 7th accomplish or require?
It doesn't require, it just extended his previous order. And like I said, I can pull it up so you can look at it, but pretty much it, that's where he had done such things of requiring face masks in restaurants, or requiring face, uh, the that all that's been dropped. So every time he extends it, he can adjust some of those, some of those requirements he has in there. But for the most part, he just extends it for, you know, if he gives the state authority ability for people to work from home. It gives them the ability to handle procurement so that they can procure things faster than any PPE versus going through the, you know, sixty day process. So it allows some things like that. But for the most part, he has lifted all restrictions when it comes to restaurants, events, all that kind of stuff.
So tonight, I'm assuming leading up to and during, we're still following the face mask ordinance, correct?
Yes, sir.
And secondly, are we limiting attendance tonight based on social distancing protocol?
We're about fifty percent.
Thank you. I think it's seventy-nine, seventy-nine attendees can be here. Including us? That's the chairs I have up front. Yeah, well, I mean, I think I emailed, I'm comfortable in removing the mandate with those suggestions and encouragement to comply. And I do email, so it hasn't really changed for me, but I'm okay with that, but I don't want to take it completely away because you know what's gonna happen. Come back next month and we need to enact the mandate, you know, certainly do that. Anyone else have any, I convinced?
I agree.
It was time to, it was the time to remove it, for the time being, but to strongly encourage people to continue to do social distancing. I think the social distancing is gonna get better.
Can you ask a question there? How many did your, can we say test added the vaccination?
I don't know. I don't have a vaccine. I did, we did a question.
How many had the vaccine in Hankville?
Have we had the COVID?
I just got a wonderful one.
Yeah.
What about so-called medical expert opinion? What does the CDC say about masks or?
I don't have their, any of them.
I think they still recommend it. But I mean, they never recommended mandate.
Is the governor's order may still act?
Governor never mandated masks, except for in certain specific instances, like he required them in restaurants, things that he could control. He was very specific to say that he felt he didn't have the constitutional authority to issue a state-wide mandate, but he encouraged municipalities and counties to enact a mandate for face coverings. He did that several times.
Yeah, he lifted ones in the restaurants.
Yes, but he's lifted all all requirements for any kind of limitations and all of that.
I think he knew he didn't have the manpower to handle the whole state because we dealt with it here. Just with restaurants. We had one restaurant in particular that DEA, which is a state agency, wanted us to go out and control that restaurant and we Yeah, so.
Well, I don't know about McBride. It seems like we can look in, put this down, and then if we need, and all these some of that, you know, and bring it back. So the governor's order, don't even know it.
Yeah, okay.
The other part of it is we're still encouraging masks. We're still encouraging social distancing. We're encouraging washing your hands and getting your vaccinations.
Now the big one is the vaccination, getting people, because we're the ones that's gonna type to talk about them doing it. And especially with us that took already done it up. I just had my second one Saturday. So I'm over the hill, I guess you'd say. I got it. I was a little I was more scared just than I was anything else. I figured I'd have relapsed, but I was fine.
Well, I had to open mine, just for information, Judge Snow, they got plenty of shots of Eagles on one twenty-three. They got Dharma and you got the same thing, but you can walk in, make a point and get it.
And I would point out, related to that, that per our ordinance, it did exempt anybody who was two weeks out from their second dose of vaccinations. So our ordinance, that was one of the things that was added in and the recommendations of the council member, that anybody who was two weeks post their second shot of the vaccination was exempted from the ordinance.
All right, no other questions on that. We'll go to B, which is O Market Square Property Exchange, and I'll let Stephen start on that one. You got supplies too.
I do have a, they're a little blurry because when you try to zoom in on GIS, they don't get too detailed once you get so far in. But just to kind of hit, there's two slides here, or two photos. The one on the right gives you a little zoomed out, showing where the blue dot is, is where we're talking about. So you can see the Amphitheater there. And then the blue dot is kind of behind where Dunberks and I think it's Iron Horse Steamers is going in now. And then the one on the left shows a zoomed in of the property we're talking about where it's been proposed by RKD Holdings to exchange a little bit of property with us. As you can see on the left, it would just take her property line that's behind Dunberks and just run it even until it hits the sidewalk. And then the other one would be to give us a little piece where the public sidewalk is. And I'll let the mayor's have the conversations with her and fill in any details that I made miss.
Um, I know somebody, especially Jim, he went out there and I think a couple more of y'all went out there and looked at the, that building with the wall that we owned supposedly, which we do not own. And we had made an agreement on that. And so as it stands today, I think we paid just to have the bricks removed. And she repaired her wall. And so she's fine with that. We have that in writing. So all this will do is clean it up. And we will be giving her the little green, the grassy area right there, so she can finish out her property and those two restaurants that she's gonna be having there. I know, I know y'all probably aren't as, Smiley's is coming in where Dunberk used to be. It's a restaurant for Gringle. And then the other one's a sub shop. And that way, they can use the back part and come out the back door. They'll have space back there with tables, chairs. It'll be her property. And then she's gonna give us the small piece of property. Now, you can't see them here, I don't believe. But where she's giving us is part of a sidewalk that's already there. So if she closes that off, then it's gonna cause a little bit of problem with the owners in those apartments in there. I don't think she would do it. But if we do this property swap, then we're gonna own it and it'll have to stay up. It's the apartments that goes into Dave Watson used to have, right in there.
I assume there'll have to be a survey of this?
That's, that's correct, yes.
Yes, sir.
She's already had it surveyed, so we're gonna piggyback on the same people. If this is approved, we should, we'd use the same folks.
And it would have to come back to council for two readings to, to trade the property since it's the seller.
I'd like to see that survey.
Any other questions?
Can we never hit the survey at all?
I think it was Smith, wasn't it, wasn't it Smith?
I won't swear to it, but I believe it was.
Any other questions? All right, no other question. We'll go to item three A, and that's the fiscal twenty-twenty. It's twenty-one budget amendment. And Stephen, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, sir. So the budget amendment that council will receive tonight or has for consideration includes two items. I'm starting with item B. And then we'll come back to item A. So item B recognizes the revenues over anticipated budget for hospitality. This would reflect seventy-five thousand dollars in additional revenue that would go towards purchase of a field drag, installation of LED lighting at Bagwell Gym, and then some security updates, has to do, update the cameras and the door entries, access points for the Bagwell Gym. If you look to the right here, you'll see we budgeted anticipating less revenue coming in for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one with the unknown for COVID nineteen. However, our revenues are exceeding what was budgeted. We're currently on pace for about two point three million dollars. If all the, if the pace continues through June. So this would only recognize about seventy-five thousand of that anticipated, about two point seven, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar increase. So again, we would recognize additional revenue and hospitality tax. And then we would increase vehicles by ten thousand and increase the gym repaired maintenance by sixty-five thousand to cover the items that are listed above. Are there any questions on those? So the second item is to begin the transition to roll carts for solid waste collection and move forward with that. I'll go through the budget line items, and then I've got a couple slides about that transition to answer, to kind of hit on some of those questions that may come up, or to provide some additional information. So here's where we would recognize some additional revenue. It would go up by fifty thousand. Like I said, this is business licenses. It's current, we made one point eight million in fiscal year nineteen-twenty. We budgeted one point six five. We're currently on pace to meet that number. License and permits, insurance tax, we budgeted one point eight. Ended up coming in at one point nine. It's grown by an average of fifty thousand dollars per year, so I feel comfortable in recognizing fifty thousand there. Local option sales tax. Again, this is one that we didn't budget much increase in because of the unknown for, for COVID. However, it's on pace to be about three, three hundred thousand dollars ahead of where we budgeted. So we'd recognize fifty thousand there. We would then also recognize sixty-eight thousand in increased financing. And that would then go down on the expenditure side. Sorry, to see the equipment and repairs, there'd be a forty thousand dollar increase. That would be to add three tippers, or add tippers to three trash trucks. There would be a seventy-five thousand dollar increase for the installation of the new, of a new recycle center at the new operations and maintenance facility. Thirty-five thousand is the cost that we would pay the contractor to assemble and deliver all about nine thousand trash cans for us. And then the sixty-eight thousand dollars brings us up to the number we need, the five oh three, to finance all the trash cans. Yes, sir. That would be what we would finance for the trash cans. It's a sixty-eight thousand dollar increase. And it was recognized as a revenue there.
So originally, we were, you thought the cans were four thirty, four hundred and thirty-five thousand?
No, sir. So originally, we had four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in here to do debt financing. That was originally for a trash truck, a dump truck, and a forklift. What we would do is the trash truck would actually get pushed to next fiscal year. We would replace it with the trash cans. So you'll see a note here that the remainder of the six twenty-five was actually, oh, I'm sorry, the remainder of the six, this was just for the trash truck. The remainder of the six twenty-five was in there for the Dump truck and forklift was in public, in the street department. So it's a net increase of two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, of which about a hundred and fifty of it is going for the tippers is going, the other is going for the delivery of the cans. Seventy-five's going for the recycle center. And then the rest is just to bump up since we're pushing the trash can off to get us the number to finance for the trash, pushing the trash truck off to finance the trash can. So just to give you where those numbers are coming from, and talk about the transition, I can go back to that if need be. But we had this conversation in our works, budget work session on March twelfth. And council seen, gave guidance that they wanted to transition the trash cans, and majority of council did. There was a couple options that were given to council. Option one was to approve the purchase of a side loading truck and work on transitioning when that truck gets here. We are told right now it'd be somewhere on September, October. However, with what we're seeing from COVID delays, I would not bet on that. Everything we've seen with, having to do with metal, anything that requires electronic chip, or anything that requires a vehicle, that is a vehicle is being delayed right now. So like I said, I would not count on that being delivered in September, October. Option two was to retrofit the current rear loading trucks and begin the service earlier. We would still order the new side loading truck, and it would be here sometime. Our guest would be, would be winter of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. And then we would implement it in service whenever it would arrive. This would allow us to bring the service online as soon as possible. And we would just end up bringing on a couple additional temporary employees to help with trash collection and the interim. And then what that schedule would look like would be if council approved the first reading of the budget amendment tonight, then we would have, we have a budget work session on the twentieth. We would look to do the second reading, as well as the financing on the twentieth. And then get council to also approve the purchase of the roll carts. This would give us about ten to twelve weeks to start notifying the public and adopting rules for the collection. So we would need to set things up like what the costs would be for an additional can, that it would be responsible if, you know, what happens if a can gets stolen. Do we pick up anything outside the can, stuff like that. We're working on those rules right now. Around the end of June, the carts would begin to arrive. Right now, the contractors told us the week of July twelfth, they could begin distributing the cans. They'll also distribute a packet with our guidelines with the cans. And then on July twenty-sixth is our anticipated date that we can begin collection inside the city if everything stays on schedule. Again, in July, we would order the side loading trash can once the budget is approved. And then we would hope to get it sometime during the winter, whether it be first of next year or the end of this year. And then implement it in the service and hopefully, and at that point in time, we would remove the two part-time employees that we would need to get, the two temporary employees that we would need to get by. What that looks like budget-wise is this is the cost to transition. There's a startup, and then there's a new recurring annual cost. It's about five hundred thousand dollars to purchase ten thousand trash cans. That's what is in the budget amendment is proposing to finance. Forty thousand, I'm using round numbers because it was five hundred and three thousand, but I just rounded to five hundred. Forty thousand is the retrofitting of the rear loading trash trucks. Thirty-five thousand is assembly and delivery of roll carts, and then twenty-five thousand is the cost for two additional temporary employees for six months. And then
Could you print that training for us?
Not at this moment.
At this moment, but could you print that format for us?
Yes, sir. And then thirty thou, about three hundred thousand dollars would be the new side loading trash truck. The goal is to finance that in next year's budget. So you're talking about nine hundred thousand total cost to get into the service with eight hundred thousand of it being financed. The new recurring annual cost would be about twenty-five thousand dollars. This is to order additional cans each year to replace broken damage, stuff like that. Plus, there's an ongoing cost for the RFID program so that we can tag each trash can and track its location. We would be looking at a new, there's a new position recommended in next year's budget that would really be about half trash support and also help with stormwater. So half the budget would come out of general fund. The other half is coming out of the stormwater budget. And that person would, if somebody had a can get damaged, they'd go pick it up. If they had a can that got stolen, they'd go and deliver it. They would handle some of the administrative side of it. They would also help on stormwater. And then we would have an ongoing cost of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for roll carts and trash cans that are gonna be financed between this budget and next budget.
In our work session, we were told that the cost of purchasing carts was about four hundred and seventy-five thousand. But that's gone up?
We added some additional carts. That was what we needed to provide, one to every citizen. We added an additional thousand carts to have extras because we don't know how many people are gonna want two, two carts for collection, three carts for collection. So we bumped that up to make sure we had additional. We don't want to sit here and issue all the carts out and then us come back and have to amend budget again and ask for additional three or four hundred carts.
Did they pay for those additional carts?
So what we're talking about now, what is in the budget that council has received as part of the fee schedule for next year, would be that if you got an additional cart, so the first cart would be free. We'd pick it up, maintain it, all that good stuff. A second cart would be a sixty dollar a year collection cost. We, unlike most cities that do this, we don't have a utility to bill anything monthly on. So what we would do is bill it yearly. That's what our recommendation would be. Send it out the first of January. And again, this is all for discussion. This is part of what I talked about over the next two or three months. We need to set in place. But so it'd be five dollars a month, but we would bill it once a year for an additional cart. And we would do that. And if somebody wanted a third cart, then it would go up to ten dollars a month. It'd be a hundred and twenty dollars a year. And right now, our proposal would be that we wouldn't go above, nobody could have more than three carts out of residence. That, that's been our internal discussion. Whether that's what goes into place is up to y'all. That will be part of what we would work through with the rules and regulations related to the collection moving forward over the next couple of months. We'd get those in place before the cans were distributed. But what we wanted to not do is have somebody just ask for three carts because everybody can have three carts for free. And then we said we not have enough carts. We'd be, we're picking up three times more trash than what we're supposed to. We can't track the carts. So we would want to have some, some cost for additional carts to make sure that people don't just get more carts than they need.
So Matt Tate, your answer is yes. Yes, it was in four seventy-five.
Five hundred, yes, sir.
In our budget work session, we were told that the advancement cost to get this system operational was eight hundred and fifty-seven. was eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, so that is quickly increased to nine hundred thousand?
That's, we, I think we added in the two, uh, part-time temporary in the cost, additional cost for trash cans.
So is that a yes?
Yes.
But now the truck was already in there though.
Correct.
We're gonna buy that one with the other.
Um, I don't think that's really, what he was asking about is the total cost to, to, to start it up.
I was saying in your, in your figures, you've got a truck in there.
Correct.
So even if we don't do trash cans, we still buy a truck?
Correct, that's already in the budget for this year.
I want to make sure he understands that part.
Yeah, there's already in the budget this year to finance a truck, but what we're gonna do is push that off till next year if we do the cans.
And in our budget workshop, we were told that the approximate cost to fully implement this system over three years was one point two million.
That is the capital purchasing, what, what is that to be purchased? Um, and then there'll be the financing associated with that, yes, sir.
Does that number change?
No. Because on top of this nine hundred, you would still have a second truck that we were talking about ordering in two years that would add that extra three hundred thousand to make it one point two.
So that number is still not?
Relatively similar, yes, sir.
Approximate measure of the numbers, but that number is still approximately of our.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't pay for all this by borrowing the money?
Yes, sir. All but, except for the numbers that are in black. Everything in green would be financing.
So what are we voting out tonight?
The budget amendment to change the budget to go to cans instead of the trash truck. And then that would, and then what you'll have next Tuesday at our budget work session is we'll have the second reading of the budget amendment, the financing for the cans, and the approval to purchase the roll carts.
So, um, the, the ordinance that I've got, those orders, sixty-eight thousand, what is that for?
That's the difference between what the trash truck was gonna cost and what we need for the trash cans. Because originally, that number included a trash truck and a leaf truck. We ended up buying the leaf truck last fiscal year because ours died. And y'all approved that at our budget retreat last year in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And that showed up before the end of the fiscal year. So even though it was already adopted in the budget, the truck showed up before the end of the fiscal year. So what we still had in there to finance all of the difference in cost between doing the cans versus what was budgeted was sixty-eight thousand dollars.
So what, if this is approved, what are we committing to spending?
Everything is in the expense part.
Which is?
The forty thousand is the tippers, the seventy-five thousand for the recycle center, thirty-five thousand for the assembly and delivery of the cans, and five hundred and three thousand to purchase and finance trash cans.
So how much, so, I, I need some help here. So how much of that is, is that the interest?
No, sir, none of this is actually finance payment. All of this is just the capital cost. The finance payment will, first payment will not be due until twenty-one, twenty-two. It will not be due until after April of next year. That's already in the proposed budget that you've received, that number is reflected in there as council makes those decisions.
So we were not voting to spend that?
You're.
We're committing.
After your second reading, you would vote to spend, af, after you approved this upon second reading, you voted to, you've approved us to do most everything up there, but we would have to come back to you for the actual financing, which would actually come at the second reading. The financing only takes one reading.
But do we know?
It's out for bid right now. They're due on Friday, we won't know what that is until Friday, you'll know it by the second reading.
How much would be, be borrowed?
It's, uh, five hundred and three thousand. Actually, I'm sorry, it is more than that, uh, because it includes the, um.
If it's going to cost nine hundred thousand dollars?
It's, uh, it includes the, the dump truck and the forklift. So it is a total of, you know, I'm telling you. It's gonna take me just a minute if y'all want to have some further discussion. Which one?
The one that I asked you to print?
Which one was that, I'm sorry? This one? Mm-hmm. That, that's over two years, if you notice, one's financed in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and one's financed in twenty-one, twenty-two.
So what are we gonna spend this year?
What we're gonna spend this year is everything except for the one that says fiscal year twenty-one, twenty, and, and the two additional employees will be in next year's as well, because we're not gonna have the cans out until after July. So if you approve everything in the budget amendment, we would spend forty thousand dollars to do the tippers. We'll do seventy-five thousand for the recycle center. We'll do thirty-five thousand for the delivery and the cans. We will not be able to, um, do the temporary employees until we start the service, which will be after July first. So it'll be in next fiscal year's budget. The new side loading trash truck would be in next fiscal year's budget. Everything else that you see, the five hundred for the roll carts, the forty thousand for the retrofitting would be in this current fiscal year's budget.
And what, so we're, we're borrowing that?
What's that? The five hundred thousand dollars, yes, sir. That's part of, that's the budget.
How much is this, the one, one time startup cost, will they reoccur any years?
Because we're financing it, it will reoccur. The, the financing will reoccur for five to seven years, depending on the item. But the startup cost is the forty thousand for the retrofit, the seventy-five thousand for the recycle center, and thirty-five thousand for the service contract, and the cost of the cans, but the cost of the cans will be financed. So that will be the recurring cost between next year, which will be the side loading truck, and the roll carts, which would be this year, with total a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for between five to seven years, depending on the piece of equipment.
Alright, so we're, we're going to vote, and in effect, we're voting to borrow five hundred thousand dollars to purchase carts?
No, sir. You're, you're budgeting to increase those line items by two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, increase those expenditures by two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, which will in turn allow us to spend forty thousand dollars on tippers, seventy-five thousand dollars on the recycle center, thirty-five thousand dollars on the service contract, and then finance the tr, the trash cans. That's what you're voting to approve. And if council, like I said, if, if council doesn't want to move forward with the trash can, that's y'all's decision. We were presenting an option to be able to do so at council's recommendation to do so as soon as possible. This would be the option. Um, the other option council would have is if they don't want to finance that, they can pay forward out of our fund balance. It would reduce our fund balance from about four million dollars to three point five million dollars to purchase the trash cans. So it would reduce our fund balance by about seventeen percent, eighteen percent if you wanted to do that.
And what happened, the interest, don't the money still be low?
Probably below two percent based on what we've been seeing.
I think I understand this, but the, the nine hundred thousand dollars is what it's gonna take to to get into initially. And two hundred and eighteen thousand is part of that nine hundred thousand?
Correct. And then the other part of that nine hundred thousand that's not in this budget amendment will come next year, which is the additional trash, which is the trash truck, which is recommended in the budget that you council has for twenty-one, twenty-two, is recommended to purchase and finance next budget year. So that payment will not start till the following budget. All of our, our first payment for any of our debt actually starts a year after we finance it.
We are literally putting the cart before the truck.
Well, the reason for that is they would like to go in all the truck, right, I am, but if we're not gonna do trash cans, they can go in and order a different car truck.
We're, we're not gonna order.
Either way, they'll order a truck. They're just not sure which one they're gonna order to inside of that trash can, right?
I understand that part of it.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
The one question he had, I'm, I'm pulling it up now, um, it took me a second to find it. So the total financing of what we're all be doing is six hundred and twenty-five thousand. It's five hundred thousand for the trash cans, a hundred thousand for the dump truck.
We're gonna borrow six hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Yes, all of it was already approved in the budget except for sixty-eight thousand dollars. Because you already approved the dump truck, you already approved the forklift, and the difference between what was approved for financing versus what it's gonna take to do the cans was sixty-eight thousand dollars. We originally were gonna finance five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, now we're going up to six twenty-five.
And that's additional trash cans?
Correct.
Any other questions?
If y'all are good. Okay. And I, and I will take these slides and I will email them to you in the morning so you can have them for reference. I apologize for not having them for you tonight.
Our next item on the agenda is B, rezoning property at Crispew Road and Sheffield Road to F R D.
I don't think you did anything from us on this one, is it?
You told me on that one.
It's on the agenda tonight.
I was gonna tell you, I got received an email from the, uh, owner of the property. If you'd like for me to read that into the.
Who, who is the owner?
Uh, I'm trying to find it now. It is, uh, it is signed by, thank you for your consideration, P W J dash L P. Limited Partnership, if, if you'd like for me to read that in?
Yeah.
Okay. Says, "Good afternoon, my family and I are the sellers of the subject parcel of land. We have been longtime residents of Easly and are pleased to know that this land will be devoted to residential development and not commercial. The proposed, it says high-end condominiums, which is not as townhomes, will be much more desirable in this location than a convenience store or retail strip mall. We are providing this note of support in the interests of the neighboring community in that the hope that we can help sustain the character of this area, which is primarily residential homes. Thank you for con, your consideration, P W J Limited Partnership." I received this right from five apartments, sorry.
Who did a person sign that letter?
No.
You don't know?
Pardon?
I don't know who.
You don't know the name of the person who wrote that letter?
I do not.
Somebody named, uh.
Was it LLC or corporation?
It's an L P.
The L P. Uh, at the very top of it, it has, uh, Robin. Robin Dervon, that's the, evening.
I think we, we'd all pretty familiar with this one and, uh, we'll just wait for the.
Wait for it, wait for it.
So, uh, Ken Abalay, you, you met with the.
I, I met with, uh, I mean.
We got these shadowy figures out there, you got the owner, the developer, the engineer, and we're not sure who the owner is, not sure who this developer is, but you had a meeting with someone?
You talked to the neighbor or, or the, uh?
Well, after.
The engineer, we have engineer.
Yeah, and I have, I have the engineer.
So after our informal.
Yes.
We had another meeting.
Yes, we have another, and I had another meeting with the engineer.
And you did a project.
And, uh, basically, there was not much movement on their end, other than, uh, putting up, uh, privacy walls.
And they agreed to put up a fence, um, but we also had a member of the, um, community there as well. Um, we asked specifically how many dwelling units would be acceptable to the community, and they answered zero. We asked the, uh, engineer how many dwelling units he might be willing to reduce by, and he said zero. So there was no negotiation that was going on beyond the agreement to, um, place a fence, a six to eight foot privacy fence.
Everyone was pretty polarized and they got their positions, and I met one last time Sunday with the, the next door neighbor Gloria. And, uh, had a very good meeting with her, but it was basically a recap of, of meeting with the, uh, the engineer and, uh, just hearing her, her pleas and, and, uh, her positions about, uh, the integrity of the neighborhood, uh, the large lots around it and stuff like that. And I was, uh, understood her position very well, and I understood her position very well. That compact dense, uh, development in amongst these very large lots, uh, in her opinion was not compatible.
So in response to the great amount of public input that we had received, the dev, the developer was not willing to make any changes?
He was willing to, um, put up the fence.
Put up fence, but it's not a number of units or anything like that?
We, we talked about set backs, but set backs is important to the, to, uh, to the neighbors and, and I agree, uh, but that, in that condensed tight area, there's just some space to increase the set backs.
If you want to put that many units in.
Correct.
And then it is expansive with fewer units.
The direct, uh, engineer was asked the direct question, how did you choose forty-nine units? And the answer was, if you have fifty units, you have to put in two entrances.
After what?
Red code.
You have to what, if you have fifty?
You have to have two entrances if they're fifteen. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm in a hole.
I know, I know, I know. Can we get, Tommy, would you explain to us the, the, um, um, the board that met? And for what it is, did they vote a hundred percent or?
Yes, sir, of those present, uh, I think it was four, uh, but of those present, it was voted a hundred percent for. Uh, you know, I, I don't mind saying there appeared to be, for whatever reason, on this one, not on the first one, some confusion about what time it was and all that, for whatever reason. Uh, we had a couple that was at the second meeting. This was the first meeting that night, and then we had the second meeting for, uh, Bird Island Springs, uh, but the couple was, that showed up, you know, said that they'd gotten all the information. But there was no turnout at all for that, you know, and, uh, they can blame the sign, they can blame whatever, but everybody else was there for all the other ones, that's the same signs that they're using for twenty-eight years.
Standard procedure.
We, we, we followed and we, we have beefed it up some since then by putting a little, trying to put a little more information. There's only so much you can put on the sign. Uh, we encourage people to call and, and ask about it, and that's the reason it says, please call, eight five five seven nine hundred. So there, there's a lot of misinformation being given out there. Uh, the, a lot of misinformation about the F R D and the, and the, and the planned unit develop, the plug, which was, was another one. A lot of misinformation about setbacks, you know, I'd just like for councilor to remember setbacks are set in the zoning book that you all passed, or the council passed. I mean, back up, not you all, I'm not sure, but that is in the zoning book that is passed by city councilor and mayor, the setbacks are. So, this developer, this engineer, has gone by and done everything we've asked with the exception of law and company. Uh, it's not time to announce the developer yet. It's not time for the owner, don't, or don't have to come, they can sign away their rights for this engineer to represent them. So, there's a lot of misinformation about that being put out there by some people. Uh, I, I would just caution that, that there's a lot of misrepresentation going on. This is actually a down zone, uh, as I told some of the council members tonight. Normally, when you go from commercial to residential, everybody is ecstatic. They would rather have that than commercial, and I think if you deal with people honestly, that would still hold true. Um, so, uh, staff's position again, I, I just wanted to say is, is that we, we meet with developers, we meet with engineers, we meet with owners of property, just depending on which one wants to meet, or all of them. We try to give them the best advice we can give them, we certainly are not voting members like council, but they depend on our information from them. And again, I'll say normally, a down zone from commercial to residential is a given. You know, I, I certainly understand the three or four people that butt up next to it. I live right there, I pass by that place, I stop at that stop sign, probably more times than anybody in that area. Um, it's a four-way stop sign, and, uh, it functions the way it should function. So, it, uh, I, I would, you know, as I've talked to some of y'all, I would, I would encourage, just think, the thought of it, that there's a lot of misinformation going on, going on out there.
And I think a lot of the people are wanting us to fix the, uh, infrastructure, but it's kinda like I talked to Ken about that. I don't think anybody in here, if you've been there on Woodford, when they first started, the state's not gonna step in and do a four-lane highway for you, for you to build houses. They wait till you build them and get the traffic, and then they'll come in and help you. But they're not gonna fix that out there until we increase the amount of traffic that goes through there. I had one lady call me and she wanted me to stop all the people that just come through there that don't live over there. You know, I just can't do that. You know, she says it's a pass for it and people's using it as a shortcut. You know, I can't, I can't do that.
And, and Mr. Mayor, like I've told you before, we fix that four-way stop sign, one mile down the road, you know, that wasn't going toward Darnish, that is another four-way stop sign. So, all we're doing is moving, you know, until the state, uh, spends the money to, to fix infrastructure as a whole, equip piecemeal. Uh, the, the best that we could probably look at there is gonna be around about.
One of our citizens made the comment, "There are no sidewalks in this proposed development."
Yes, sir, and the reason because of that, we normally, uh, ask for sidewalks within...
That's an accurate statement.
That, that is an accurate statement, and the reason it is an accurate statement, we haven't done a site plan yet, and one of the residents brought up about the fire approval, and I made the comment, they, they know what's going there, I, I, I think he took that, they approved it. We haven't done a site plan, that's not, that's, that procedure hasn't happened yet. This is just a concept that's being approved by council. But the reason there is no sidewalks is because the roads will not be needed to the city. If the interior road was needed to the city, we would require a sidewalk. Because they're private and owned by that subdivision, they can walk in the roads, they can do whatever they want, because it's theirs. They've got big sidewalks.
So, when the site plan does come to the city, does the city require sidewalks?
No.
That's the reason we're probably...
No, because it's private.
And, you know, for, for some reason, that just got my attention.
Yes.
You know, I, I don't know, just, you know, there, there are no sidewalks in this development.
Yeah, and, 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 and one thing that council can do is say, "There'll never be no more private roads in the city." Put that in the zoning book, that all roads must be public, and that way we'll have sidewalks, but along with that, now keep in mind that these tax dollars that these people are spending, we gonna have to pick up their trash, we gonna take care of their roads, we're still getting the same amount of tax dollars as a, a townhouse subject across the residence area across the town. And so, you, you gotta give and take.
We've got two areas, I'm sorry.
If I might, there's, I think one of the big problems on your setbacks, as Tommy was talking about setbacks, is that the neighborhood is perceiving the drawn lines that they have seen on our sketch plan as being, as, as being the, um, the actual homes, the wall, but that's not it. There's a yard there, and there will be a house inside of that tiny lot.
Setback line?
The dash lines of setback lines.
Yes.
This will be your max billable area here.
Right.
With the thirty, is it thirty-foot setback or fifteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen-foot setback plus a fifteen-foot buffer.
That's right, right.
So, there's actually more, but the perception is, they see the drawn lines and they think that's...
Yeah, the buffer is fifteen foot. The setback's gonna be about thirty foot, depending on where, where it's at, and that's what they keep saying about next to Middle Creek, that is fifty foot. Well, it's just where the house is at, it gives you that extra, same way with being there, you know?
And that, that's a misconception that's been, uh, certainly...
I, I think the gentleman that Kent invited to the meeting, I think we had liked him some, I'm not saying we changed his mind, but we left shaking hands and it was a very good meeting. But even he thought, once we explained to him, that lot there will be graded down. You're not gonna have a two-story house where you see all two stories that stand up above ground, you know, the, the lot comes down. That two-story house is no different than a two-story house in Middle Creek or anyplace else. You know, for whatever reason, they, they seem to think that that stands up higher. Two stories is two stories, whether it's my house or your house.
There's a, also, if you look at the contours, there's a large hill over by this glorious house in the lower left-hand corner, right there, and that would be graded down to be on the same approximate levels the, the rest of the...
Now, the water's going in the lake.
The water has to go to the stormwater in, in the pond, and there were a lot of comments about not having the pond in the front, but you gotta have a pond down here, guys. That's the way water runs.
Um, what I was gonna say is, we've already got two, if not more, developments right now in the city that charge each homeowner, and they provide them a, grow the way we can, just like we've been talking about, and then somebody else comes by fixing it. Are there more than that? Probably are. I know of two, and that's the one on South Fifth, Estates Coach, and then the one beside Middle Creek. That's in your H L A money that you pay.
And this one will be similar, Mayor.
Same one.
We talked to them about not having no metal cans, so there'd be no, no clanging and banging, and they, they did put that into the, uh, stipulation for the homeowners.
Well, if it were to take more, I think you're limited to what you can put on the commercial, is that right, correct?
I'm sorry, can you...
Is it limited to what you can build on the commercial right now, residential?
Was, whatever goes in negative commercial, that's correct.
Is something like a car wash that's been on one-twenty-three?
That is correct.
It could go there?
That is correct.
At a dollar, general will go there?
That is correct.
Okay, if there are no more questions, we'll go to Adam C., Danix Property at the corner of Wimberly and Brush Creek Road to F R D. Stephen and Tommy?
Alright, so, I'll give a little background on this one, Tommy and I, he can tell you about the planning commission, um, or provide, and try to answer your questions that you, uh, you have. So, if you look here, you'll see the blue parcel here, this total parcel here is about twenty acres. They're talking about annexing about nine, uh, partial, forcing that off, annexing in nine acres. They've asked for it to be annexed in F R D. Um, the owners expressed intent to, uh, do independent senior living with about sixty total units. With it being F R D, this is the preliminary plan they're showing, uh, for the site, and then what they're proposing is to do something like this on the site, with it being independent senior living. Um, and I'll go back and I will say that the planning commission did approve in March, Tommy, any concerns, comments?
We, we had some, uh, some people there, a few people, and, uh, uh, there was one gentleman that, that he wasn't really for it, he wasn't for the one across the street either. Uh, but, uh, though, but they did vote unanimously for approval.
What is that circle in the middle of it? That right there, there's, I think there's a cell tower right there on that property that they had to deep, they cut out a circle for it.
So, we...
Yeah.
And that nine acres, if, if you remember right, y'all annexed nine acres across the street, uh, last year, that's, that was also part of that property. They've just decided to come back, somebody else to get the, the other nine acres.
And that, they have, this one was F R D as well, and it's to be single-story, uh, townhouse apartments.
That's correct.
Is that where the barn was?
That, that barn is still there with the horse, that is correct.
Yeah. And there's already a sidewalk down this one.
Correct. We have a sidewalk on Wimberly.
And all this was just from Wimberly, the only acres of Wimberly.
They've, they've got one on each because it's more than fifty units, so you've got one on Wimberly here and one on Brush Creek there.
They do have sidewalks.
Yes, there's sidewalks right there, and they actually have sidewalks. Again, this isn't a site plan, this is only a...
Yeah.
They have, they actually have a, a, a proposed, uh, like a Zebra out here, dead, with all of it connected. You can see, kind of, their site plan, all of that, kind of, this is one they've done elsewhere, so you can see, kind of, that they sent that as an example.
How many stories is it?
Three stories.
This is three stories, what's proposed is four stories, correct?
No, no, what's proposed is three stories.
Four stories is gonna be the couch length.
Okay, that'll be next month.
Lot going on.
Ken, any more questions? If not, we'll go to Adam D., amend the F R D zoning property on Wimberly.
So, to refresh your mind, memory, for those that were on council when this first was done, um, this is seventeen acres that we're talking about here. Uh, it was originally purchased by Mr. McKinney and brought to us as for an F R D to do ninety-three townhomes. He was gonna do them similar to the ones that he did behind the library, the single-story, uh, groups of four townhomes. Um, he has since got somebody else who is looking to develop it, and, and I think he sold it off, he's having some medical issues if you didn't know. But, um, yeah, he's looking to sell this off. They've come in with a proposal of going to seventy-four single-family detached homes instead of ninety-three townhomes. So, this would actually reduce it down by about twenty units and take it from attached to detached. Um, the original hard ten zoning actually would have allowed them sixty-eight homes to begin with, so this isn't much higher than what the original zoning was. Um, but they go to planning commission in March, and they approved unanimously.
They did approve unanimously, and, and if I could just, like, refresh the council, this, this is the perfect workings of that F R D. They changed it from what was, you approved, there was a change, so we brought it back to you, and that's, that's the perfect thing about F R D.
Glad we had it.
Yes, sir, one of the best zones we had.
And again, even though it went down in number, because it changed the styles of homes, it had to come back through the process again. So, um, now, if they would've gone from seventy-four townhomes to sixty-three townhomes, it would've been okay, but because they changed the style of units, for example, if they wanted to go from townhomes to apartments, they'd have to do the same thing, they'd have to come back through this process. Um, so this shows a large view, and then I did a little zoom-in view, just so you can kind of see, um, and they are proposing, um, he left, but they are proposing sidewalks on the interior. And they, and they want to be sidewalks on Wimberly over here.
Sidewalks, yeah. Yeah, this is excellent.
So, if we have all these properties connected to the new trail, that need sidewalks, get them.
That's bad.
Correct.
And that'll, that'll close the loop, that'll just backclose all the big sidewalks in Easley, connecting the West Creek to Wimberly to Red O's complex. Oh, yeah, that's bad. But, for all of us remembering, uh, this was controversial back, uh, a year, a year and a half ago, that neighborhood didn't really want townhomes, uh, in their area either. And he was a, he was a tough, he was a tough one, so I think this one, although this is the first reading, may seem, but I believe the neighborhood more receptive to having residential homes, joining residential homes.
One of the things, one of the things I wanted to mention was, you'll hear a difference between a P U D, of Planned Urban Development, and a, a variable review district. Variable review district is for single use, whereas a planned urban development must really have multiple uses within that zoning category. And having the, the variable review district flexible, I think you're right, um, the flexible review district gives you a single use, and you still get to look at it and approve it, change it, negotiate. And then any major changes or minor changes can be reviewed as well.
Ken, if no other questions, we'll go to Adam E., which is awarded repairs for South Second and Dogwood.
Um, so I'll go through this week, y'all are familiar with Dogwood and South Second, both currently being closed due to the, the call works failing. We were able to secure, uh, grant our funds from County C Fund, and we also received a grant from the S E Rural Infrastructure Authority to do repair on these. Um, we contracted, council approved for us to contract with the Rose River Group to design and bid these projects out. Um, the bids did close on April twenty-ninth, we received five bids and four no bids. Um, they're considered no bids because the contractors actually purchased plans, but they did not submit any pricing. Um, the Rose River Group has reviewed the bids and recommends award both projects to Howard Contractors. Um, I will say that the total estimated cost actually came in below budget, um, quite a bit below budget, so we were excited about that. Um, and we'll have contingency for unknown conditions within these areas. Um, should council approve tonight, um, our goal is to start the proof construction and get everything going as soon as possible, so we can get these roads fixed and back open.
Contract, uh, partnerships and settlements?
To be able to bid, yes, sir.
Any questions? If not, we need to, when you had the opportunity, thank Justin for his hard work. He had a lot of help, but he really worked hard trying to get the branches together.
Then, uh, you, you may not notice it, but I will say in the last three years, there's been a major improvement in the stormwater throughout the city. I would hope you would notice the receiving of less complaints from constituents, but we're still making it a priority, and we're actually going down that list that council approved to award last month. And I think the first three or four projects have been awarded on that as well.
I've noticed. Three accidents, we've, we've been around and it's looked at, and, you know, the office, the mayor's done a good job.
All right, you bought another pair of boots.
No more questions on that? We'll go to Adam F., Fair Housing Resolution.
Uh, really don't have a slide for this, except for just to say it's on the agenda for tonight. Um, just so you know, um, we do this every April, April is Fair Housing Month. We adopt that, not only because we believe in fair housing or fair access to housing, but it is one of the requirements that we have to do to be able... but it is one of the requirements that we have to do to be able to apply for grants. So, we make sure we do that, but at the same time, we do send out, Chase isn't here, but he sends out, um, news releases and press releases, and we do radio advertisement for that, because fair housing is an important topic that we take seriously. So, you have a resolution tonight.
All right, go to Adam four, some updates, some, um, ops and maintenance.
There's a, started the land, landscaping has started. Um, we are doing, really, the final touches, they're putting in the asphalt, the final asphalt in, they were doing that today. And, um, doing some final security and getting TVs and computers and all that kind of stuff installed throughout the facility, the training room. Um, there are a couple minor items to get our certificate of occupancy. For example, we were waiting, Justin, how long, six months on a hood, over oven to come in, it finally showed up. Now, we've got a suppression system put in it, so we're waiting on that now, but one of the things you have to have, excuse me, done. Um, there's a couple things that, um, we had to do to make the building official happy so that we can work to get C O. Um, we were, I'm not giving the date, every time I give a date, it is wrong. Um, so, I'm just saying we're working as hard as we can to get in that building as soon as we can. Um, we're pushing the contractor on both projects. But you can see, the shop is on the right, it's, um, the storage is on the left. There's office space, the training room, as I said, you can see the TVs going up in the conference, in the training room. Um, fuel item's done, uh, the front parking lot's been paved, they were paving the back parking lot with high-duty asphalt today. Um, and then, like I said, there's just a couple little things, like we're waiting on ice machines, waiting on air, codes for the trucks, um, a couple of things like that, so. And I will say, COVID has not been our friend, because anything metal or glass, if you're waiting for windows or glass panes, it is not helping at all.
Appliances.
Appliance, yeah, appliances. Who would've thought it'd take six months to get stuff? But, um, so, fire, fire, fire facility, uh, they're sheet rocking, they're painting, they're putting in the drop ceilings. Um, they're putting tile in today, the metal on, and the outside hasn't really changed a whole lot because they haven't put up metal. Um, that started today, thank goodness. And they're putting trim work up, and then they'll put the metal up, and once they get the metal on the exterior, they can actually start finish, doing some, finish grading on the site and put in parking lots and start making it look a little nicer. But, um, it's been a little frustrating all around on this one. Like I said, here's the training room, you can see drop ceilings, lights, and stuff like that going in. And then the top right, the one on the right is the kitchen and dining area upstairs, day room. Um, you just want me to keep going? Yes, okay. Just, we talked about this earlier, budget calendar, the two green ones there, um, for the proposed budget work sessions. You have your book, your, uh, budget books are in your box, if you have not picked them up. If you have any questions, as always, I'm available to go through and answer anything that council may have. Um, right now, we're scheduled for April twentieth and the twenty-seventh for work sessions, depending on how everything goes. On the twentieth, we'll make the determination on the twenty-seventh meeting, and those start at five-thirty. And, um, Mayor, do you want to do them here, or you want to do, I haven't set a location for them yet, here, the other?
I'd rather do them up there.
Oh, the other, okay. So, we'll, we'll plan on doing those at the, um, shouldn't they, 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 in the old council chambers? Then we can go from there. I did have some, I didn't put them on the sheet, but I got, like I said, we talked about stormwater. Wanted to show you some of the projects they've been completing. This is spreading a peach tree, you can see the rusted-out pipe on the right versus them putting the pipe in on the left. And as always, we're dealing with the old seventies and eighties metal pipe that is beginning to, that's past its life. This is Fairfax and Huntington, where they rebuilt the swell. And, um, you, I don't have the video, but the day after they did this, it rained, it looked like a waterfall coming down through there. This is Bridgewater, this is, um, over at Huntington as well. They dug this out to make it an open, they, they removed the pipe and made it an open air, um, ditch. And we're gonna go back in and plant some, um, plants in there that are wetland plants, like ferns, hostas, stuff like that, that's good around water. And we're also working on the left side over here, where this, there's a string that's underground in this person's yard. We're gonna put a French drain in there and bring all that over to this side to help keep the road from eroding away over there. Um, Pine View, they've redone this, the medians to put a swell in them. Sunning Dell, this is the swell back through there, they've redone it. So, as you can see, they've been busy, um, in all the ramps up the grass grove, but there's, there's a lot of projects like that that we're doing ourselves. And there's some that we're still having to contract out, just because there's so many of them that we can't keep up with them ourselves, so. And that's, uh, that's all I had, Mayor, if there's any other updates or anything you want to discuss.
Also, I'd expect in that plastic pipe.
Hundred years?
We won't be here.
Uh, if anything happens to that pipe, it would probably be that it actually, like, collapsed or it's not gonna roast or rot, it's gonna collapse, or somebody's gonna cut into it. Branches, tree roots are gonna ruin it or something.
There was a sleeve to put in if they had to. Any other updates from any departments? Anybody?
I'm looking a lot if we turn it air and get it run about thirty degrees.
It feels good, don't it, Tim?
Other than that, any, any council people have any, wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm a little worried, any council people have any there? Ms. Pat does, she just don't remember.
Oh, yeah, I, I do.
Okay, stand there.
I'm a.
I can't see you.
I want my zoom screen. No, I, I, I do want to make a, a slight, uh, statement, and, and I can do it with, uh, award, uh, reports, I guess.
You can, I'm gonna, that's, I'll be, that's.
About, uh, the, um, development impact.
As they all, yeah, okay.
Thank you very much.
Sir, can I take the signing book in place outside of Wimberly, if I'd like everything to be, whatever the, uh?
You can, if you like, if somebody will sign it.
I spoke, spoke so, so, I guess this is it.
There, you, 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 yeah, yeah.